Mr. Harker.
Here.
Ms. Meese.
Here.
Mr. Dalton.
Here.
Mr. Oaks.
Here.
Mr. Haymore.
Thank you. Please join us for a moment of silence and pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic, which is safe, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, just for all.
Hearing of the citizens, does anybody need to address this board?
We do not have any.
Okay. Approval of the agenda.
I make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Moved by Mr. Dalton.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Waters. Ready for vote. Agenda's been approved, six yes, zero no. Chairman's report, I don't have anything, let's pray for Mr. HF, sure do miss him tonight. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to Article 5, Division 7 of the Pennsylvania County zoning ordinance, we, the planning commission, have been empowered to hear and decide specific applications in support of said ordinance, and to make recommendations to the Board of Supervisors or the Board of Zoning and Appeals. In accomplishing this important task, we are charged with promoting the health, safety, and general welfare of the citizens of Pennsylvania County. We must ensure that all of our decisions and recommendations be directed to these goals, and that each be consistent with the environment, the comprehensive plan, and the best interest of Pennsylvania County, its citizens, its posterity. Anyone here to speak to the board regarding zoning cases will be limited to three minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, before you open the first public hearing, we need to go back and approve the minutes, we missed that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's alright.
Need a motion to approve the minutes.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mrs. Meese.
No, I'm sorry.
Yours, Ms. Meese.
Minutes have been approved, four yes, two absent. Excuse me, five yes. Oh, still waiting for one. Six yes.
Didn't hit it off.
Two absent. Alright, let's reopen that public hearing. In case R-22-036, Mount Zion Baptist Church, Mrs. Ragsdale.
Those are the cases for next month, it's Roger and Lisa Pleasant. It's case R-22-033, Roger and Lisa Pleasant have petitioned to rezone 1.69 acres located on State Road 853, Inman Drive, in the Tunstall Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District, to allow the property to be consolidated with an adjacent property zoned A1. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summaries enclosed in the packet, Mr. Chairman, Roger Pleasant is here to represent the petition.
Mr. Pleasant, come forward. Do you have anything to say or add to what we've already been provided in the packet?
I don't.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else signed up, okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion, in case R-22-033, that we approve changing this parcel of land from R1 to A1, so it can be consolidated.
Motion by Mr. Oaks, is there a second?
I second.
Ready for vote.
Pushing over.
I'm pushing it.
Mm-hmm.
Very good.
Motion carries, six yes, two absent. In case R-22-034, John and Rosemary Martin, hearing is now open.
Case R-22-034, John and Rosemary Martin have petitioned to rezone 0.339 acres located on Kane Creek Parkway and Barbara Road in the Dan River Election District from M1 Industrial District Light Industry to R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District, to allow the property to be consolidated with an adjacent property zoned R1. Once the property is rezoned to R1, all uses listed under Section 35-222 are permitted. The staff summaries enclosed in the board packet, Mr. Chairman, I do not believe that Mr. Martin is here to represent the petition, but I will be happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Any questions from anybody on the board? If not, we're ready for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, in case R-22-034, I make a motion, we recommend to the Board of Supervisors rezoning of this property.
Motion by Mr. Horn, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Waters. There we go. Motion is approved, six yes, two absent. Case R-22-035, Kristy Hicks.
Case R-22-035, Kristy Hicks has petitioned to rezone 7.56 acres located on State Road 724 Mill Creek Road in the Westover Election District from R1 Residential Suburban Subdivision District to A1 Agricultural District, to allow for a summer camp. Once the property is rezoned to A1, all uses listed under Section 35-178 are permitted. The staff summaries enclosed in the board packet, Mr. Chairman, Kristy Hicks is here to represent the petition.
Ms. Hicks, how are you?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, did you have anything you would like to share with the board?
I've already started a garden there, and I had a really good productive year with gardening, and I think I'd like to, she calls it a summer camp, at this point, I just want to have a program where I can teach children how to garden, because that's something we, I'm a school teacher, but I didn't school teach for 20 years, but that's something a lot of them don't learn in school, and I think that's essential, to be able to grow your own food, so I'm gonna start out with gardening, and then go into other activities, maybe like soap making, little things that, you know, we need, they're necessities, that we take for granted, because we can go to Walmart and pick them up, you know, so that's what I want to do.
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Hicks while we have her?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Hicks, is this indoors, in a building, outside, what's your plans?
It's outdoors, and at this point, I've got 14 acres that, I've got adjacent land that joins that, that is also agriculture, it used to be part of a huge farm years ago, and no one's lived there probably in 80 years, and it's just land that I have vacant, not doing anything with, it's got a creek going through it, it's a good garden area, and there is a, anyway, I've got some, this is another story, but I've got some old Civil War letters, it talks about the place where it looked like 200 years ago, so I know what it used to look like, and I'd like to sort of get it back to where it was, so children can go there and feel like they're back in time, and they can, I want to, I think we take for granted what we have now, I've already said it once, but I've got some old quilts, I've got some things that people made years ago, and I'd like to share that with children, so they realize that what we have now, we haven't always had it.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to say, what is the criteria for belonging, is it just community, is it open up to the public, what, are you limited to how many children you can take in?
Well, right now, it's just me, I don't have an organization, I don't have a nonprofit, I have been taking, I had one of my former students, 30 years old, she helped me with the garden this summer, and then recently, I had some of my Hispanic students come and help pick the peppers, so, I mean, I'm just inviting children, we've had, we had a taco picnic a few months ago, and they like to just come over there and play with their parents, it's a community-based, you know, I'm trying to get, you know, community involved, I like to do some partnerships with some local businesses, where we could prepare students for adulthood, and I've got a lot here, I've got a plan that I've written up, it'll take more than three minutes for me to go over it, if you want to hear it all, I could read it to you.
Well, I think of today's prices of groceries, we all could go back to learning how to do better gardening, productive gardening.
And as a school teacher, every day, I see children throw away half of their tray in the trash can, I mean, vegetables and things that we took for granted, I grew up on a farm, and we ate vegetables, children don't like vegetables now, they like hot dogs, hamburgers, and pizza, and if it's not that, it goes in the garbage, but what I found out, that when, with my niece and nephew who helped me do gardening, I found out that when they planted the garden themselves, and they harvested it, they had ownership in that, and they were more inclined to eat the food that they created, and I think children need to learn how to cook, that's another thing they can't do, they can't plant or cook, that's a reality.
That's right, that's all I have.
So that we are not getting the cart before the horse, this is just a rezone of property.
That's correct.
And I may never get, it may never become a summer camp, but that's why I went on to do.
At that time, she would probably have to come back and get a special use permit, am I correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
For our purposes tonight, just a rezoning from R1 to A1, to open that door, that possibility.
Got you.
Yes, sir, thank you very much, for your time and any advice you've got, I'd love to have it.
Thank you, sounds like a good idea.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else like to speak to this case? If not, public hearing for case R-22-035 is closed. Looking for a motion.
I make a motion, in case R-22-035, that this request be honored.
Second to, second to motion.
Motion by Mrs. Meese, second by Mr. Horn, any discussion? If not, let's, ready for vote. Motion is approved, vote of six yes, two absent, recommended Board of Supervisors to rezone this property. Case S-22-025 is now open for public hearing.
Case S-22-025, William and Cheryl Estes have petitioned for a special use permit on 11.79 acres located on State Road 875 Horseshoe Road in the Westover Election District, to allow for a campground, the staff summaries enclosed in the board packet, Mr. Chairman, William Estes is here to represent the petition.
Come forward, please, Mr. Estes.
You can go up to the podium.
Good evening.
I have drawings of the campground, if any of y'all would like to see it.
Sure, absolutely.
I believe they were included in your packet, but I...
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
I doubt if you can.
As you can see, the campground only consists of seven campers, they are full hookup, water, electrician, sewage, and each one of them has got parking for two vehicles, and I've got emergency exit where it was any disaster, fire, anything that you could get out of any problems. I did have a special use permit, a temporary special use permit, and now I want to go to permanent.
Okay. Alright, I think we have one party signed up to speak, would you be willing to come back and answer any questions that may arise from that?
Okay. One thing too, I don't allow any dry camping, primitive camping, no tents and nothing like that, and the people that stayed with me in the past has been construction workers, they come in on Monday afternoon, and leave on Thursday afternoon, and go home, got four of them right now that is working on the Berry Hill project, they are electricians working in that project over there, like I say, they come in Monday afternoon after work, and Thursday, they leave and go to work, and they go home till the following Monday, and most of them has been there, has been project workers, nothing real long-term in time, sometimes I go three or four months, and I'll have a camp over there.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mrs., hang on one second, Mr. Estes, any questions from the board?
Do you live in a house right beside where the campus?
My daughter lives in the house right beside of it, my sister-in-law lives right in front of it, and my wife's cousin lives up above it, and my son lives next to that.
I have talked to most all of the neighbors, and, you know, they don't see any problem, hadn't yet had any problems over the years, and, you know, they just give me a vote of confidence by word, if I need it, I'll have them here.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Estes.
Thank you.
Robin Weddle.
My name is Robin Weddle, I live at 4809 Horseshoe Road in the Westover District, and I live across the road, and Mr. Estes, the only time he's asked us anything is 20 years ago, when he asked if we were okay with a special use permit for the building of 265. We agreed to that, so today, when he said he had talked to everybody, we live across the road, he has not mentioned this to us, but I want to say that we've lived in this area for 40 years, it is a residential area. Mr. Estes has 28 acres behind his house, so if he wants a campground, it should be behind his house, and beside his granddaughter's house, not across the road from us. I did some research, and there were two universities that did a project on what reduced the cost of your house, and your neighbors, or any kind of construction that was next to you could reduce the value of your home from 17 to 25 percent, that is $40,000 to $60,000 off of our home, not that we're looking to move, but we've lived there for 40 years, we're now retirement age, and you're looking to put potentially people that could be vandals, that could be nice people, but you just don't know in this day of crime, what you get across from you, so, he says that he has four campers there now, there's six on the lot now, he stores some campers there, we never thought much about it after 20 years ago, because he only had one or two campers there, and most of the time, it was either his families or his friends, if you look at the pictures that I supplied you, diagram B is what is usually there until this summer, and if you look at diagram C, that's what's been there this summer, I mean, we have dogs, I take them out multiple times a day, I know my neighbors, so I feel pretty safe, but with a campground, you potentially could have new people every day, and how do I know, because he told us 20 years ago, this would just be a three-year thing, now he's asking for almost 12 acres to be rezoned, it may be seven today, but what says that he won't come back, and then will 14 or 21, so, you know, this is something that me and my husband have put a life savings into, and now we're looking that that could be taken away from us in value, so basically, it is up to what Mr. Estes wants to gain money from, at the expense of all the neighbors. Thank you.
I have, I have one question, then, have you spoken with Mr. Haymore, who is the, I believe is the...
I sent him an email, but I have not spoke with him.
Okay. Does anybody else have any questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Meese.
You say you've been living there across from it for three years?
Oh, no, I've lived there for almost 40 years.
Okay, so, has this campground produced any noise?
There's noise, there's loud vehicles going up and down the road, motorcycles, there's golf carts going in and out, even we've witnessed children driving the golf carts, so, yes, no. No, it's a 45 mile an hour, but you may have a golf cart, a golf cart that doesn't have the slow moving... the slow-moving sign on it or anything. So it's dangerous.
So, help me to understand, the noise and the golf carts and the motorcycles are coming from the campground?
From the campground.
Okay.
That is right. And I would say for, that when they built 265, he had that special permit at that time. From the time that was ended until recently, there's only been like one or two campers there. And they're most of the time just there for a short period. But these people have been there six months. So it's not a short-term thing.
That's all I have.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I got a statement. Ms. Weddle?
Yes.
It's not really a question, but according to our packet, are you familiar with the conditions that are recommended?
Yes, he said seven.
Well, and if any future expansion would have to go back through the office.
But 20 years ago, Mr. Estes told us that it would just be a three-year thing. So now he's changed that. So then if you give this to him then, then I'm gonna be back over here again because none of us are promised tomorrow. But at retirement age, you don't want to have to put up with a lot of congestion, a lot of noise or anything.
Ms. Ragsdale, what is, what does he currently have as far as approval for how many sites? Do we know?
He does not have approval for any sites at this moment. There was a temporary permit issued that was expiring. He applied to have that extended and the Board of Zoning Appeals denied it. And that was 20 years ago. We were notified by the Health Department a few months ago that there were campers on the property and they, they flagged it since they also permit campgrounds and did not have any, anything, permits for this property. So he was cited for a violation and he came in and submitted his special use permit application at that time.
And he has land behind his own house if he wanted to put campers there.
All right. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Any, any further questions or discussion? Mr. Estes, would you come back up? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do you have any, any specific response that you wanted to give?
Yes, I do. No camper over there has a golf cart and the motorcycles coming up and down that road belong to neighborhood friends. And the loud trucks does not come out of that campground. They belong to neighborhood friends. The young guys down there has got loud trucks. I agree with Ms. Weddle, but these vehicles in that park are construction workers. They do not have any vehicle over there with loud pipes, anything on them. I try to run a very good place and my theory is, hey, if you don't obey the rules, you can find someone else, somewhere else to stay. And I'm not in it for the money, I'm in it to help the community get construction work going here. I only charge $300 a month and I pay the utility bill. The utility bill runs me $500, $600 a month.
Any questions for Mr. Estes?
Let me ask you this, some campgrounds have rules. Do you have anywhere on the board of rules that no noise after 10 o'clock or whatever time?
Never had any problem with it, never had to post any. Like I said, these are construction workers, they come in and eat, by dark, they in the bed and they're gone by 6 o'clock in the morning.
But if you expand it, we don't know whether it will be totally construction workers or other people.
Well, like Ms. Weddle said, you know, she's worried about expanding. I understand if you expand, you have to go get another permit to do expansion.
We would have to do a site plan review and the Health Department would do a site plan review as well. He would be required to upgrade the existing septic that is there to accommodate additional campers. And then that would set off additional requirements from the Health Department. So there is a review process, it would not come back before this board. But my staff and the Health Department Office of Environmental Health would review it to make sure that all local ordinances and state codes are met for any expansion. Our ordinance and the state code sets a limit on the number of campers that can be per acre and it requires a certain square footage per campsite. So all that would have to be followed as well.
So the, just to be clear, the infrastructure that, that you have in place now is suitable for seven sites?
Yes, sir.
And that, what is the cutoff in the size?
I'm not exactly sure what he's got, what his infrastructure is at the moment. He, if this is approved, he's gonna have to submit actual engineered site plans and drawings to us and the Health Department and we can determine at that time.
And tell me again, Mr. Estes, when your, your special use permit expired? Your last one?
Sir.
The last special use permit you had, when did that?
Several years ago.
Okay.
I was on the way that it expired and, you know, I've operated it off and on and like Ms. Weddle said, the sun over there, sometime and the sun gone. The one she's talking about has been there four or five months. Like I said, these four campers are working in the industrial park. It's two more campers there. One of them's home caught on fire. He lives at the, in the Vandole Room and he's staying there while they refurbish his home. The other gentleman, he's from Tuscaloosa, Alabama. He worked for Goodyear down there, they shut that plant down and he transferred here. He's got 20 years service. He lives over there by himself. His family's in Alabama and they in the process of, am, am I gonna quit my job and go back to Alabama or we gonna buy a home?
Okay. All right. And so it's fair to say there's been campers on and off the site since your permit expired? How did you become aware that your permit had expired?
Like she said, someone spotted it.
Okay. And how, when was that?
The Health Department.
How long ago was that? Do you remember?
I believe it was September.
September? Recently?
It was.
Okay. And you, and you in good faith made efforts to get?
Right.
To get back into compliance?
I got a letter the next day, my wife and I was in Chatham to get this thing straightened out.
I understand. Okay.
Yeah, I think we need more clarification. If we approve this special use permit, then we go and look to see if he is in, has the correct infrastructure? What happens then if he doesn't?
So you are, the special use permit would just approve the use. At that point, if the VZA were to grant a special use permit, then we would review site plans to make sure that it meets the zoning code, what is there. The Health Department would have to review his well and septic. They would have to review how many spaces, the size of the space, all of that before they could actually issue a permit to operate a campground because they are the permitting agency that regulates the actual operation of a campground. And so you all would just approve the, well, not you all, but the Board of Zoning Appeals, if they granted the special use permit, would just approve the use. And then from there, we would, it would be regulated through other, other avenues.
This is like step one in 10 steps.
Yes.
Right. So, Mr. Estes, you, you understand that if we approve this, it doesn't give you the permission to start tomorrow with campers?
Right. Just so I'm clear, Mr. Estes, just in our summary and our background discussion section, a permit was issued in, in 1991 to allow a temporary campground. And then in 2003, an application was submitted to allow the continuation of that, basically, but it was denied at that time.
And then I got a special use permit. Branch was doing the bypass construction over there.
Uh huh.
To tie in 58 Danville. And I was issued a special use permit then.
Right. And that was after 2003?
Yes, I believe it was 2004, wasn't it?
It was 2003.
2003, okay.
Just the information that I have in front of me indicates that you were denied in 2003, a continuation of that special use permit. But you didn't, until recently, September, I guess, realize you were not in compliance?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other discussion questions? Thank you, Mr. Estes.
I just have one comment. I wrote through that Sunday and you could tell that the grass had been well-maintained, there was no trash, no debris around. He had it in remarkable condition. So I didn't see any problems with, with what the area looked like as far as cleanliness.
Like I said, I've got Ken people all around it there. I mow it every week. If there's no campers over there, I still mow it. I take pride in having a neat place because the neighbors keep theirs neat, I'm keeping mine neat.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Ms. Rag...
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Delayed. Ms. Ragsdale, it's my understanding the Health Department keeps check on these campgrounds and if they are not doing what they're supposed to, they deny, do they have yearly permits? Can't remember.
I'm not sure if they do or not. I believe that they, I mean, I know that they do do inspections to make sure that things are operational because, you know, there are requirements based on the number of campsites you have. They have to be within so many feet of a bathhouse and things like that. So they do, you know, do, I know they do periodic inspections. I don't know how often they issue a permit. But, you know, water, I know they do regular water samples if you have so many hooked up to a well and things like that. So there, there is oversight that is ongoing.
Okay, I'm gonna hit this gavel and then it's closed. Anybody have any?
I just wondered, has anyone had any input from HF? Because Westover is his district.
I haven't.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay. Hearing is closed. Case S-22-025, special use permit to allow for a campground. This is in Westover District, Mr. Haymore's district. Floor is open for a motion.
I'm, I mean, I would like to have HF's input, but he's not here. I make the motion that we do approve this because I know that Ms. Ragsdale and her staff are gonna do the right thing to make sure it's what they are supposed to do, the guidelines and the Health Department as well. So I'm confident it will be done in a very professional and regulatory way.
Motion by Mrs. Mies.
Is that, is that with the conditions recommended by staff or without? Without or with?
With.
Okay. Motion by Mrs. Mies with the conditions.
By staff.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Oaks. Ready for a vote? Motion carries. Five yes, one no, two absent. Old business.
I would just like to remind everyone that we will have the second bi-monthly meeting, joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors to review the zoning ordinance update in December. I believe that's December 20th. It's the Tuesday prior, the Tuesday of the Board of Supervisor meeting and that will be at 2:00 PM in this room. So just go ahead and put that on your calendars. You will get a packet prior to the meeting that will show you any proposed changes that the Berkeley Group is recommending so that you'll have plenty of time to review that so we can have good discussion during that meeting.
Okay. Any new business?
Next month, we will have four cases. There are two rezoning and two special use permit cases.
All right. Anybody have any questions or comments? We're adjourned.